To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You want to do the roll?
Sure, I can do the roll call. Roll. Chambers?
Here.
Dahl?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Lindsay?
Here.
Steffus?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Bastin?
Here.
So we'll start with recognition, please.
Okay, we have, hopefully I say this right, Kalea Biddit. Kalea's in the audience here tonight. She represented the Mineral Point School District in Darlington at the regional, or sorry, sectional spelling bee, won there and went on to Madison and competed on the 7th of March. She's here. How did it go in Madison?
Good.
Hopefully you spoke louder into the microphone than that. Did you know, kind of where did you finish in the pack in Madison?
Versatile, I think.
Okay.
Just the word you cut out on. Where did you finish, honey?
About halfway-ish, yeah.
Okay, that's impressive. And Kalea was the first runner-up in the Mineral Point competition and the winner maybe had a little phobia about getting in front of the next group and chose not to go. So then we were represented by the winner of the sectional spelling bee and then went to Madison. So the winner from Madison would be going on to Washington to the national competition. So I'd like to congratulate you and ask you to just come shake all the school board members' hands. Next up, a couple of impressive honorees. Every year Herb Cole hands out some scholarship opportunities, teachers, principals, students, very competitive. People have to get recommendations. Their information is reviewed at the CISA level, then sent on to the state level where local winners are selected. And this year, we had two winners. Mickey Eppenau, elementary librarian, received the Herb Cole Scholarship. And you see on there, it talks about she receives a $6,000 award. And then there's another $6,000 award that goes to the school district. We've had a few in the past. And Mickey Eppenau is our most recent teacher slash administrator recipient. And then Cody Pierce was the winner of a Herb Cole Excellence in Scholarship. And Cody, again, same kind of process, letter of application goes on to a local level. His application is judged, moves on to a state or larger panel to decide. And Cody is a recipient of a $10,000 Academic Excellence Scholarship that he can use next year. So two well-deserving individuals that represent Mineral Point in all its finest. So congratulations.
Do you have to use the $10,000 for school?
Ah, yeah. Were you hoping to buy some corn or something?
And our last recognition, I will turn the floor over to the coach of our most recent state qualifiers and state champion, Mr. Curtis Fiedler.
First off, thank you for the invite. It's greatly appreciated. And, you know, it was quite an awesome ride for those three young men that absolutely worked their tail off. I couldn't be prouder of them, along with the rest of the team that pushed them in the practice room, that continued to help them achieve their goals. Was able to have, again, the three state qualifiers. Taren, who went 1-2 at the tournament. Mason, who went 3-2 and was able to place 5th. And then Nolan, our state champion. So again, it was quite a fun weekend. It was the first A champion in seven years, I believe. And it's nice to finally get off that streak and hopefully have a run of a few more here in the coming years. And a big thank you to the fans, the school district, friends and family that supported this group. Along with me personally, a huge thank you to Coach Miller and Coach Sokol, who had a huge part in the success of these young men. I think Nolan, Taren, and Mason would absolutely tell you the same, that those guys pushed them every day in the room. And it's a team effort to get those guys on the podium, no doubt. They'll tell you that, Mason, I'm sure will tell you that, you know, he doesn't accomplish what he accomplishes if it's not Nolan there. Nolan there pushing him, vice versa. Taren will certainly tell you that, you know, if he didn't have teammates like Trapper, Lucas, Colby, and I apologize for not saying last names, but, you know, and if I start naming people, I'm gonna forget people. But again, just a big thank you to everyone for all the support you guys gave these young men. Also wanna mention as well that Kylie Rule rested Sunday and placed 2nd at the girls' state tournament. That's not, at this moment, a WIA sanctioned event. Hopefully that's changing in the coming year. A lot's gotta happen, but we're certainly pushing in the right direction. So again, thank you guys for the support and the support of these young men and ladies. So thank you again, guys.
Okay, let's move on to purple of the minutes. Any corrections or comments?
Dahl?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Steffus?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bastin?
Yes.
Okay, move on to communications. Did anybody sign up, Joelle?
No.
Anybody in the audience want to speak?
Okay.
I have a couple, Jeff, real quick. Back in February, when we had early dismissal because of an odor in our school, it took, I don't know, it took a couple of weeks before, really the parents of the students affected knew exactly what had caused the odor and what the issue was. And my concern is, is if there were underlying medical issues with any one of them kids in the middle school, that would have been helpful information the day of. So if that ever happens again, I'm just trying to get that information out ASAP.
I thought we did send one out. On Facebook, did Joelle do it?
The reason as to why it was called up or?
Well, they didn't know the reason, but they said it was called up. Took a little time to investigate.
Yeah.
But it was put out, it was put out on Facebook right away.
There was a notice that went out on Wednesday evening.
Of the chemical?
Yeah, the day we dismissed, that evening, another message went out that same evening. And then we were trying to do an investigation after that, but we did send a message out that same night.
Of the chemical odor?
Yes.
Okay. Second concern, I've been feeling some questions on the altercation that happened at the Opera House some time ago. I don't want to muddy it tonight. I'll be working with Nate as our vice president on it to get to the bottom of it. So there'll be maybe further information coming on that. That's all, yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I hope you don't mind, Jeff. Nate's the vice president. I know you're nearing the end of your term and...
Not a problem at all.
Is this recently?
Some questions, yes.
Okay, let's move on to items of discussion. Economic impact study.
That's us.
Okay.
Hi.
What would you like us to say?
I can see from here.
Okay.
Perfect. If you want, you wanna help us by clicking or?
Sure, I can.
Want us to click? It doesn't matter.
I can certainly do whatever you'd like.
Um, yeah, if you want, we can start on the second slide. Perfect, sounds good. My name is Kim Smouts and I'm with Dan Lachershaw. We're both representing Southwest Tech. Dan and I are on a work group. A strategic initiative on our campus is to make sure that people are aware of Southwest Tech's economic impact, as we just did our study this past spring. So we're just out letting people know, answering questions, and getting more ideas on how we can continue to positively impact the area. So we handed out a quiz to board members. And if you just kinda wanna look through it, and then we'll be going through the answers throughout the presentation. And then there's a spot at the bottom to give any suggestions for, you know, what else we can be doing together. So like I said, make a positive change and a greater impact.
So we'll start here with the dollars, and most school board likes dollars. So the ripple effect of Southwest Tech and our academic programs measures our impact in return for the investments made by our key stakeholders, as you can see in the graphic there. In 2018, our economic impact on the district, which includes five counties, was $159.3 million. And that supports almost 3,000 jobs in our district. And that's the answer to question number one in your quiz. So one out of every 24 jobs in the district is supported by Southwest Tech. And as you can see from the graph, the largest sector of industry impacted by Southwest Tech is healthcare and social assistance. And because we exist, 1,142 jobs are supported in healthcare in our district.
All right. So the answer to question number two, the percentage of Southwest Tech graduates who are employed in our district following graduation was 54% in 2018, 55% in 2017, and 64% in 2016. So you can see that that number is trending down right now, and we realize that. There's several reasons for that, but a lot of it is that because of the job market, a lot of our students are getting recruited out of the district. Doesn't necessarily mean that they're not living in the district and driving to those jobs. But we are working on partnerships in our district so that our graduates are staying locally and working locally in the coming years.
So looking at this slide here, we talk a lot about ROI, return on investment at Southwest Tech. And from a student perspective, the annual ROI is a rate of over 20%, 20.1% there on the bottom left. From a social perspective, considering social costs, Southwest Tech expenditures, student out-of-pocket expenses, and student opportunity costs, and then also considers social benefits like increased state earnings and avoided costs to society. The total social costs include all Southwest Tech expenditures, all student expenditures, including interest on student loans, less tuition and fees, and all student opportunity costs totaling a present value of a little over $50 million there in the middle right.
Did you know, over a working lifetime, the benefit of a Southwest Tech associate's degree over a high school diploma will amount to $327,600 in higher earnings per graduate? So that's the answer to question number three of the impact of that associate's degree for our students in our district.
So here's the answer to question number four on the quiz. The programs with the top three starting salaries for Southwest Tech graduates, number one, the nursing associate's degree, almost $28 per hour. And then EPD, electrical power distribution, that's a one-year technical diploma. It's a super popular program at Southwest Tech. We're teaching that in two sections now. This academic year, $24 an hour. And the physical therapist assistant associate's degree at $23 an hour. These are self-reported starting wages that we receive within six months of graduation. Of course, these numbers don't tell the whole story, as many of our alumni work overtime in these fields. So the nursing numbers there, $27.79 per hour, that's around $50,000 per year.
All right. And then here again, we kind of outline the impact. So operation spending impact takes into effect here our college payroll and then the ripple effects of what that means to the community in the district. So $20.1 million or 516 jobs are supported because of our operations spending. Student spending, as you can see, so that's our student spending at the college and then beyond, is $3.5 million or they're supporting 58 jobs because of their spending in the district. And then as you can see, the biggest one obviously is our alumni impact. There are higher alumni earnings and the increased benefits and then the ripple effect of that. So 135.7 million or 2,422 jobs supported in the region because of our alumni. A pretty big deal.
So this is an exciting thing. We started this year our tour and lunch program. It makes a big difference when we can get potential students on campus, face-to-face, and show them the facility, talk to instructors, show them the programs. But of course, we need help getting students on campus. If each of you can, you know, help us by spreading the word, students come to campus, they get a full tour, they get a free lunch. Students like that, I know. I like that. You can check it out at swtc.edu/visit. And they do have tour lunch cards I can hand out. If you wanna fill those out and give those to me, they're good for free lunch for any student to come and talk to instructors, look through the program areas, all of our lab spaces, ask questions, talk to other students. It's been really popular this year. Makes a huge difference to get the students on campus. And another point that I wanna make with this is 90, I wanna say 89, 90% of our students come to us within our district, our five counties around Southwest Tech. So it makes a big difference to get those students on campus.
And that's it. So yeah, we just wanna thank you. We have great partnerships with Mineral Point School, and we appreciate that. And yeah, if you know any students that are planning to come this fall, our scholarships are still open until the end of March. So please let students know that. But yeah, do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, how often do you do those lunch events? Is it just whenever they can do it or?
Yeah, they can, if you fill the card out, they can make an appointment with Kyle Bennett. He runs that. He'll schedule a time with the instructor, make a personal one-on-one appointment. He'll know they're coming and, yeah, it works really well.
Okay.
Yep. We had a student come. I joined them. A student came from, I wanna say, three hours away, from up north to look at our EPD program. So yeah, it's a real one-on-one service.
Do you have a website that lists all the different programs?
Yes. It's the swtc.edu. And then at the top of the website, one of the links is programs. You can search through all the programs and has the tuition cost. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Any new programs you'd like to highlight?
New programs? Not this year. We haven't, hospitality was one that we combined our culinary and our golf course management last year. But this year, we haven't added anything new, like Dan says.
Or new, or I guess.
What's that?
Just things that maybe people aren't aware of that you offer that might be new or different?
I would say, like Dan said, our electrical power distribution program is definitely one of our most highest in-demand programs. And obviously, they make great wages coming out. Our nursing program, currently, there isn't a waiting list for that, I don't think.
No.
Which isn't always typical. So yeah, it's a great time to come into our nursing program. And then, I mean, our, any of the programs like in our industrial area, electro, mechanical, welding, and, let's see, CNC, like those students are just getting hired before usually they're, they are even into like their second year for a lot of those programs. So yeah, it's a great time to be a student at Southwest Tech.
And then our welding program, we offer a net welding component, a program for that. So that's helpful for our students. And I also wanna mention, we have an IT network specialist program. And they just got a new, last fall, they got a new server. I'm not a computer person. A new server room with new servers that they can use, just like they would out in the field. It's just, it's phenomenal for those guys. And the women, too. So yeah, there's a lot of great lab space on campus that I don't think people realize. But yeah, it's really cool. You guys come and visit, too. Give you guys lunch, too.
Out of your 7,500 students?
Oh, yep.
How many would be right out of high school?
Oh, good question. We're definitely the highest in the state for students coming right out of high school. And I think it's right around, oh gosh, I don't wanna guess a number. But I think our average age is probably low 30s. But gosh, shoot, Derek, one of our deans, just said this last week, and now I don't remember the percentage, but I'll find out.
I mean, do you think it's, do you think it's 2,000? I'm just curious.
Oh, I don't know that it's that high, just because like our full-time student enrollment is about 1350. So a lot of times when our students are coming straight from high school, they're doing the full-time program. That number takes into account all of our part-time, all of the public safety, fire, EMS we're doing as well. So I'm gonna guess, I mean, can you guess like 40%?
I don't even wanna guess, 'cause you know, a majority of our students are non-traditional students these days. And I mean, obviously, we're trying to get more high school students in there, but I don't, I can't say the number.
Have you got ramped up efforts to try to recruit out of high schools?
We have, definitely. The tour and lunch program is new this year, just to get more students coming in. And we've also just been doing more of our program visit days, trying to really, yeah, capitalize on just the days that we think students will come to campus. This year, instead of doing our traditional open house that we've been doing on a Wednesday evening, we're doing a homecoming and open house on a Saturday with a country music free concert. Our whole campus open. So just trying to get students to kind of come in and see that it can feel like our traditional college campus. We do offer a lot of activities that four-year schools might offer as well.
Sure.
But yeah, we've been, and just doing a lot of, you know, credit in high school to easily transfer to Southwest Tech as well.
Mitch, in your school here, do you try to get your students to Southwest Tech at least once throughout high school? We don't, I don't think we make it. Like, yeah, we don't necessarily, you know, say to kids, everybody's going to Platteville or everybody's going to UW-Mass. So we try to make everybody aware of the program offerings that they have. We certainly partner with Southwest Tech. We have College Up. So we have some students that are taking classes here in the building that are being taught by Southwest Tech instructors. So we're trying to open those doors and keep them open for students.
We do have multiple programs that have busy, like the program Shadow Days or have taken students. So we do several programs that will go every other year or twice in a student's high school career, but not every single one. I was actually, my question was about the College Up. And maybe you guys don't have enough years of data yet, but have you seen any sort of data that shows the students taking the College Up classes are coming to Southwest Tech then, after high school?
I can check on that. Yeah, it's still so new that I know a lot of those nursing students are like just getting to, I think, I don't even know if they'd be into school yet. But I'll check to see what the numbers are on that.
Just because I think that is a really large thing that a lot of our high school students are taking advantage of, a lot of those College Up classes.
When you said not having a waitlist anymore in the nursing program, that's probably the first time in many years in one of the newer programs, students can start now, get the CNA, start taking some classes here, and then they're not on a waitlist anymore. They're right into the nursing program. And that's new this year.
Yeah, that's a big deal.
So, and we have a lot of people that are taking the CNA program through Southwest Tech at different times. So for anybody that might be interested in it, it was a great, a great plan to kind of follow through and get them into a school of nursing right away.
Yeah, and for those students who know that's what they wanna do, it's a great path.
CNA, EMT, I think a lot of your students are not allowed, but there are some.
And I don't know as far as athletics or what, but we have a trap shooting team, and we're hosting the High School Invitational Trap Shooting Event in May. We expect 400 to 500 students. I mean, that's just taken off like crazy the last couple of years. So that's really exciting. So, yeah, there's a lot of opportunities.
Well, thank you for your time.
Yeah, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, number two, HSR, we're going to the table.
Thank you.
So we're gonna move right into the reading program.
I had somebody ask me about the L N high school gym. I guess they're kind of concerned about the fact we're putting a storage room in the gym. Is it basically gonna be a room inside a gymnasium or are we taking a?
About $10,000.
You mean the cafeteria?
The old gym, is what you're saying?
Will it be the old gym?
It's gonna be the old gym, not the new gym, correct?
Right, right.
That's still, it's, I talked to Tim last week about it, and basically it's, it's not necessarily, so, you know, we hopefully maybe come up with another option.
Okay.
That was what I got up here. Like, wouldn't, because it's not a deal.
Is that the one you didn't think was gonna happen this summer?
But anyway, I think it's, there's room for this.
That would be, I believe that'd be next year, but that's gonna be a remodel project.
Yeah, so it's not gonna happen. So if we can come up with something else in the meantime, you know, we'll work together, kind of, with the contractor, whoever wants it.
Michael, we, everybody wants to learn the bids. The cost of that little roof.
Well, he did, he did say it was 20,000 more than what it would be without it. Wasn't it because we've been to have to support the roof, the bracing, fixing of the roof with air handling on top?
That was, that room, that location was $20,000, but some of it would be offset because of not having to do more work to support the roof structure for a rooftop unit in that area.
I remember it being the cheapest of the proposed options.
Yeah, it was, yeah. You know, maybe we can, I don't know, hopefully we can, in my opinion.
I have had a couple of concerns about it.
Yeah, in the old gym.
Yeah.
Just as far as space usage.
The bids are 2:00 tomorrow. It's been posted. So if everybody wants to show up, please walk in.
I'll be working on, say, a property tax increase.
So the HSR update's been tabled until what point?
Next meeting. They're coming down tomorrow. Tim is coming down tomorrow for the bid opening.
So there might be informal discussions?
Might be. And I would say, I'll try to capture any notes and share that out. But it'll be probably next month would be the next update for HSR. Right, yeah, if there'd be something that's.
Interested in. Okay, Matt, or yours?
That's good. Thanks for having us. I'm gonna introduce Richard Frader, Brooke Madra, Mickey Eppenau. They're gonna just speak briefly about some of the programming that's happening in the school. This is our annual Title I report. We are school-wide Title I because we have a, we've met a certain threshold of families that qualify for free and reduced lunches, meaning there, it's a little above finance, so they have economic hardship. So these are Title I federal dollars that comes through.
So, these are Title I federal dollars that comes through to support all students that are now school-wide, and so we just want to give you an update on how it's going. So, just, this is just a packet that has all of the information, I'm not gonna go over all of it. This was developed first through CISA III, CISA III hosted a evaluation walkthrough, and then we shared this with our leadership team at the elementary, so, but if you have questions about it, just letting you know. I just want to celebrate first with just consistency with the, I guess, overall results. This is the third year in a row it's been significantly exceeding expectations. We aren't resting on our laurels, I looked up schools that were like above us in terms of points, and I've been in touch with about four of them, and, but when I reduced it down to the schools that were kind of like us in terms of demographics, were probably the light numbers, were probably the top twenty in the state in terms of all things being equal, so that's, that's very promising. And I would say, just consistency, we're just continuing to do good work throughout the building. Library media technology program, Nikki, you want us to say real briefly about that?
Sure, yes. And Harry and Chris, you know, they've done a great job setting this program up, and I feel very honored to be stepping into this place, but just a few ways that the library media program supports reading instruction. I do a lot of collaboration with teachers and model technology use in the classrooms, and then those collaborative projects really focus on the standards, they can extend the standards and extend student learning. The authentic use of technology and literacy is part of their curriculum then. Students have access to quality literature and resources that they can check out through the library. There's engaging literacy experiences, you know, we have a lot of big grants that we're working on now to bring authors to our community, ways that we celebrate reading in our school, and I would say the biggest part about having a quality library media technology program is that I get to be a reading champion and celebrate that with kids, so that when they are struggling, or when they are overachieving, or wherever they are, we get to keep cheering, cheering them on.
So, this is Nikki coaching kids, I think I'm blogging.
Maybe.
Maybe. We're teaching their grades on blog, it's a relevant skill, but it also incorporates reading and writing and a lot of cool things, so, thanks, Nikki. And then, integration of services, Rachel's been at the forefront when I first came, she's just very much a data-informed decision-maker about which kids will get which services if they're not making proficiency levels, and I think they've gone to the next level of just integrating the services. So, for example, Rachel's working with classroom teachers, and they're communicating about what practices are working for kids in your classroom and in the intervention, and they're sharing ideas and knowledge, so that's, that's been pretty powerful. And then, this is just a picture, this is Danielle Swenson, and she's leading a lesson on shared reading about nonfiction texts, but she's bringing in not just kids at her program, special education, but she's bringing in other kids who could also benefit from the lessons. We're not saying, well, this is our kids, and then these are your kids, we're really integrating services, and so, Angie's been behind that too with co-teaching and inclusion and just, kids, just, all kids get what they need, so. You want to say anything more about that, Rachel? I said you weren't gonna say anything, so I'll hold you to it.
So, I'll kind of plug for, for Rachel or the integration of services, because just coming in, one thing that I think we do really well here is, we don't base our services on just one data point, we have multiple measures where we look at students, so we get a really holistic picture, and not everybody does that, so when we're talking about what students need and who would benefit from services, we have a wide array, and Rachel and her team lead that discussion about, these are all the measures and tools that we're using to look at these students, but I would say that's not something that's done in a lot of other districts, and so it's really unique here, and I think that's why our integration and our supportive services work so well.
And if you look at the school or park demographics on the first page, you'll notice that students with disabilities is at ten percent, that's really good, that means that we're getting at the kids K-two, K-three, before they would ever need to be tested for special education services. They're intervening, that's the whole point of the program, to be proactive, so they don't need those more significant supports, so kudos to that team. And then, instructional coaching, Brooke is working closely with teachers, modeling lessons, trying out innovative practices, Brooke, what are we doing here?
Uh, this is a classroom that was implementing book clubs for the first time, so kids were getting together, they were reading, this particular day, they were reading together, and they were having a lot of amazing conversations around the text, so it's just growing their ideas, hearing each other talking, and synthesizing new information, it's, they're great, and they're doing incredible with this, so.
Yeah. So, if you look on, turn the first page, you know, the last four years, just the graph keeps going up, that blue bar graph, and I just, these are services that are not specific to the classroom, and I know it's always, you might get a little nervous when we're asking for additional supports and services with staffing, but I, I attribute a lot of this to the investment the board has made in, in this kind of work, and I think these are, you can see the results that are happening. It's not just this program here and classroom here, but it's, it's very much intertwined, so, we thank you for your support on that.
Matt, can I add just a little bit?
Yep.
Just because I asked some people to share a few things about instructional coaching. So, it looks completely different depending on who I'm working with, it's very responsive to where we are in our coaching practices together. It can be planning and reflective conversations, it can be me bringing in knowledge, being as knowledgeable as I can be about an author or a practice, and modeling that in, in the classroom, or bringing in a new instructional practice that maybe they haven't tried before, and I'm modeling it so they can see it, we might do it together, and then gradually release that back to the teacher, that's been a really powerful one. So, there, I do have some testimonials from teachers that I've been working with, and having someone equally as committed to the success and growth of our students yields immeasurable results. Coaching provides the professional academic supports teachers need, and always keeps me learning and gearing for improved instructional strategies, I think that's amazing. Coaching has brought about a change in the way students view their learning. The students are learning to go deeper in their understanding of texts and responses, and their reading notebooks demonstrate the gains that they are making. This one I really love, she says, "I was always an independent person, but because of coaching, I saw how being interdependent strengthens us as professionals and improves student learning overall." So, we just have an incredible cohort that is willing to come together, be vulnerable with each other, and really provide the best instruction that we can for each and every kid every day.
And people will voluntarily work with Brooke, so it's not, it's not, I find someone maybe not doing well, and then I assign that person to Brooke, but the best of the best might want to work with Brooke. Everyone needs a coach, you know, Tiger Woods, Michael Jordan, they all have coaches, right? So, everyone's trying to do better, that's, that's the philosophy of my, kind of our coaching program, so. So, there are actual evaluations, so how are we doing? On the second page, yeah, if you want to go to the next one, you'll see some numbers in red and blue and a little bit purple. One thing we're finding is, we're starting to see, and I guess this leads into an area of growth, we've seen some things we're doing well, but an area of growth is, in some of our subgroups, like kids who are qualified as economically disadvantaged, or are in the special education programming, there's a trending toward now, and a number of kids are proficient reading, so we wonder why, what's, what's going on. One theory we have is we are starting to depart from the, I would say, the CAN program that we purchased in two thousand and eleven, we're going to more of those authentic literacy practices, but it's not yet consistent, and so, we think that might be part of the dip, even though our scores are still pretty high, we need more consistency there, so that's something that I think the scores are starting to reveal. Just looking more clearly down at the bottom of that second page, we look at the actual like items that kids don't score as well on, like on the STAR test and the forward exam, we're noticing kids are struggling a little bit with the higher-order thinking strategies, so Brooke mentioned, and Rachel and Nikki teach this as well, but things like analyzing two texts, and then saying, what's the common theme through these two pieces of literature? What's the theme across, what's the author's purpose for writing this poem or whatever? So, that, that's higher-end thinking, that just takes a while to start, you know, building capacity to teach that, which we found maybe the typical program just isn't addressing, so, so we're moving toward that, but it's taking some time. Any questions so far, just in what we're sharing? Okay, this is a very brief overview, but, so just on the last page, the third page is just a program summary, it's just part of the evaluation, it's like the list, all the things that are going, encourage you to read that, my three colleagues have already spoke to that, but looking at the strengths of the building, just looking at the data and just processes we employ in our school, consistent enrollment, so open enrollment's been very, very helpful. Just through surveys, I've surveyed the staff every year, just on how am I doing, will I need to improve, and staff generally feel supported, I always have room for improvement, but overly are feeling supported, and I know coming in, that was something that was very much a priority for, for teachers, to feel supported by administration. ELA results overall are sustained, but it may not make sense on this, but like if you had one score for ELA program, it's pretty good, but we do have room for improvement. And then, like I said, the integrated support services, teachers are just talking and sharing and just doing whatever they need to do to get kids to, to a level of success, so lots of good things happening. Challenges, students' SEL needs, so lots of acronyms in education. SEL stands for social emotional learning, so that's something that I would say has been added to our plan, it's always been there, but it's been more of a focus of, how do we help kids be more aware, how do we help kids pause and think, helping out their SEL. Angie, you've been behind some of this too?
Yeah, so, just being able to be in control and recognize what others are feeling or sharing, so that you know how to be responsive to their needs and your own needs, and so, as, I think just, all districts have always talked about it, but we just have a growing population, but that's a challenge for some students, so we've been talking about it on the forefront and trying to be proactive and integrate supports.
Is that part of mindfulness?
Mindfulness would be one program, you know, we have the finer pathway we've introduced, we've been more deliberate in teaching words of the month and what that means, and showing students videos or books that have characters that are demonstrating that, so we've done a variety of things, and it's just getting started, so it'll be interesting to see where it goes.
Other, thank you, other challenges, the relevance of the work, that's something I've heard a couple of times, I'm gonna do a formal survey to just say this is the issue, but I've heard from time to time that the work that we're asking for kids to do sometimes is more worksheet-based, it's more lower-level kind of thinking, and again, I think that relates to maybe purchases of resources in the past, or, or even now, that we just need to be more critical of when we introduce into the classroom. We need a consistent ELA curriculum, and not a curriculum meaning we're gonna buy something, but actually looking at the standards that have been revised, and then starting to articulate, K-12, we've had the discussions at, at N D's, what are the expectations for readers, writers, thinkers at each grade level, what are the practices and resources we're gonna need to employ? And it's not like math, in math, I think you can buy a program, and that could serve as kind of the base of a curriculum, with English language, actually, that reading, writing, speaking, listening, language and grammar, there's so much that not one program can hit it all, hit it all well, so we've gotta be, it's just gonna take time. And I think just continuing to have data, perform discussions of like looking at data and saying, you know, well, this practice is maybe more effective than this practice, and for us to say, maybe what I'm doing is not as effective, that can be a hard discussion to have, so teaching teachers how to, to pause and to paraphrase and to kind of coach each other, it's just, again, it's gonna take time, but, so just for next steps, finally, I just saw, I mean, we need to review the strategic plan, at least at the building, to just say where are we at, where do we need to be. Again, PK-12, vertical articulation of ELA practices and expectations. ELA is English Language Arts, and then a systems approach, Angie alluded to, is teaching the whole child, so not just cognitive, but what they call the non-cognitive behavioral, social types of needs, so. Questions?
I got a question, Dr. Matt. You mentioned extended hours in your program summits, because if it, we're referencing summer school?
Yep.
This might be an ignorant question, but I mean, are there summer school courses that are dedicated specifically to improving proficiency in reading and math as kind of a way for kids to catch up in between grades, or is it, is it all just kind of like fun stuff?
Like, like targeted towards certain kids?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, maybe not necessarily mandated, but maybe saying, hey, we strongly recommend that your child spend these three weeks working on reading with one of our coaches, or working on math with one of our coaches, instead of taking, say, volleyball.
Yeah. Our kids generally can't do the sports, but our, we have twelve half-days, and half of the days are, all those half-days are spent on ELA and mathematics, the other day is more project-based kind of learning, so the answer is not probably as strong as...
And Dr. Don, if I may, we, we have explored that in the past, and we've actually even targeted with Title I funds, reaching out to those families and those kiddos in the summer. One year, we, we had kids, we set up a whole set of books that were bought through Title I vendors, the kids went through and they picked out their own books per interest and per motivation, and throughout the summer then, I think we had like four weeks where we sent them like two books a week in the mail to keep them reading, and based on the data, there wasn't a whole lot of change, so we had gone back to just doing some of more traditional things, but I've been part of both, I've been part of some targeted things, aside from that reading thing, the books that I was talking about, and I've been part of the just regular summer school, but I would say last year, the group that I taught, I know a lot of the teachers try to do both, do some fun things, but it's still as much curriculum as possible too. We did kind of a hometown heroes theme last year, and got the kids out in the community as much as possible, but then each week, we'd have kindergartners going into first graders writing a newspaper about our hometown, so, you know, it was fun to get out and about, but then there was always the, the curriculum side of things that would come back.
Hey, can, can I say something to that too?
Okay.
The fun things too, if you look at reading scores, a lot of it just reflects their background knowledge, what, what they know or don't know, and how many words they know, so when we're going about town and giving kids experiences, that does impact their reading, so, and we don't want kids to take a school by the time it's August and it's, you know, gone through really, so it's, it's a good question, we're, we're looking for other ideas probably to improve it.
It sounds like you're, you're taking fun activities and applying
Yeah.
Reading and writing
Yep.
To the fun activity, to kind of integrate it.
Yeah, it's like putting the vegetables...
Make it not feel like school.
Yeah, put the vegetables in the
Right.
In the dinner.
Right.
And the sports camps happen separate from
Right.
From this portion of summer school, they kind of run at two different times, the sports camps will take place in June, and, and the other summer school will take place in July.
Okay.
So, students can do multiple things and still get some of that academic support.
Okay.
He had a big ball, didn't he? He just had a big basketball game.
With, with the new building, the air conditioning, that might open up, open up opportunities for extending those kinds of opportunities even more so, because we can run, that's the other challenge too, it's in July, it's pretty toasty around eleven o'clock, so. Other questions?
We have great people working
Yep.
At all of us, I guess we've been doing a great job. Thank you.
Nice update, thank you.
It's a little election time.
Just saying. We just had our candidate forum last week, and I saw Angie working on the official ballot, getting that out to the municipal clerks. Dr. Lindsay just signed some letters that we will be sending out to all the municipal clerks for that election coming up in, in April, so we are on schedule and moving forward.
The candidate forum, Mitch, we should look at ways to try to increase the, the visitor participation at the candidate forum, I don't know how to do that, advertising, mall or door prices, I don't know.
Free food.
Free food.
Is the video being released at some point?
Yeah, I sent it out this afternoon.
Okay, I was gonna say, I looked for it the other day.
Yeah.
All right.
And, you know, I think, I, I don't know the same. I haven't had anybody approach me, but I think sometimes our attendance at school board meetings, you know, I can't make it in on Monday night, but I can watch it online, and I don't know, people are thinking, you know, that I might watch it there, I mean, it would be certainly great... I mean, it would be certainly great if the room was packed with people wanting to interact and ask, you know, additional questions, follow-up questions. But I think, I think some of our community members enjoy the, I can watch it online too.
And I must say, the media club did an outstanding job that night.
I think it depends on the issues of the day. And I don't want to say that we've had less controversy than we have maybe, but I kind of feel like, you know, we don't have a referendum on the ballot or, you know, different things. So that kind of kept the number of questions submitted.
Two badgers who are playing basketball on the same floor.
Joel, what percentage of those questions that were asked by the media club were submitted from the public versus questions that maybe someone came up with?
Yeah, we had 15 questions submitted this year online. So I don't know how many you got through, because I was saying...
No, so those were all on there?
There were additional ones that were on there too.
There were at least like 12 on there.
When I sent the list to the kids, I said, you don't have to pick all these, but Mitch said they went right orders. It's okay.
Okay.
But 15 wasn't bad, actually, to have submitted.
Yeah.
So a year ago, in at this point in time, we had used 55% of our budget, just a little over 55%. And coming February of 2020, 53%. And again, you know, you almost look at that as being identical. We have a little bit more money budgetarily this year, so the percentage being down a little bit, it kind of makes it, we're about the same point as far as our expenditures as we were a year ago. So a little bit over halfway through the budget cycle and, you know, halfway through our budget. So I think we're in good shape. Recently, email was sent out about trying to wrap up any purchases that you might need for this year. Obviously, there'll be some things, the spring sports won't expend their budgets yet. So we hold on to that money for them. I think of like the art department, I might need one more order of clay. I don't need it today, and I'm not gonna buy 100 pounds of clay now and have a clay brick when I need to use it. So, you know, they'll hold on to some of those dollar amounts for them. But typically then, we start looking at, okay, if you didn't need it and haven't ordered it by this date, you must not need it for this year, and we'll look at the budget that way.
I was gonna ask, on the bills, I see there's a mid-welder, tape welder for $4,500. That was obviously something that was budgeted, is that...
Yes.
That's that period?
So the staff members had that email sent out to them. And then also, let's start looking at your budgets for next year. So they'll start to submit budget requests for next year so we can work on building a preliminary budget that will bring to you end of the school year, June meeting, so that if approved, we can start making those purchases for next year over the summer. So that process never, never comes to an end. We're always looking at the budget and the best use of our budget dollars.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to consideration of board member salaries. This is only for discussion tonight. Again, I am pushing that forward because I am going to be getting off, so I figure it's easier to come from me than any of you guys that are left behind. And honestly, I really suggest, I didn't bring the list, but I think a realistic figure when you look at the area around us, I think you guys should really seriously consider looking at $1,000 annually. And I would actually suggest that whoever becomes the next board president should maybe get a couple hundred more. So I would suggest $1,200. It's been quite easy since Mitch has become superintendent. I don't have many interruptions, but my predecessor was at the same.
I tried. I left a copy of the current board policy for everybody at your current location. It's policy 164. And if you look in that first paragraph, the per-meeting amount should be determined by the board each year at its organizational need. So you'll have the elections in April, you'll have your regular board meeting, and then you'll have new members joining you in May. Then you look at those positions, your board presidents, vice presidents, so on so forth. And that would be the meeting, if you're considering making any changes, it would need to be at that meeting per your policy. I just shared this with everyone, so you have a copy of that.
Can we comment on this at all, or?
Sure, this is, it's open for discussion.
I guess I was always under the impression that this is a thankless job. And so, and I didn't even know that board members got paid. And this is just my opinion, and I'm not, certainly not even interested in doing this for the money. I just wanted to do it. But if somebody wants to raise the fees, I respect that. But I just, to me, I just don't think it's necessary. That's just my opinion.
Just remember you can always...
I know the president, I have all the...
To give your salary back to the district too, with the board members that have done in the past. And a few years back, we didn't, we did not take any pay. Because the board chose the teacher salaries, the board decided we weren't gonna take anything either.
And the president does get a lot of phone calls and questions.
You got your mouth.
I, yep, I fully believe that.
And in the past, there has been, there has been board members that have not, have not taken their per-year. And I don't know who, but you just simply refuse that you don't take it.
But you have to submit a letter to the district saying you would not like to take it for that year. Maybe just give you a check.
You get a, no, you don't want a check, or otherwise you'll get a, you'll get a letter from the IRS.
Right. I mean, that's what state statute says, is you submit a letter saying you refuse your salary, you know, at the beginning of the fiscal year.
And if you want, if you still have that article, if you want to get it to me and I make a copy and get it out to everybody. So then they at least have that to kind of look at. You brought, Jeff brought one that compared different school districts and kind of rate of pay for board members and things like that.
I find it interesting, though, that the current seated board can adjust their salary. You'd think it would be this board adjusting the salary for the next one.
This doesn't really... Because honestly, that's...
The board is never rotating at one time. You know, there's always somebody this year will be elected, so...
And I think the reason, and I, public groups do that for the fact that, well, if you get elected, you can't raise the salary in the dumb room or whatever.
You have to, you have to claim, I think it's like 600 or less, you don't have to claim for taxes.
Oh, no, this is your claim.
No, you have to pay taxes.
That's the pay that labor costs, like, to somebody else.
Yeah, I can also, as an employer, if you pay less than 600, you don't have to report it, I would think. If you pay that to your employee, it's not reportable. Yeah, but, that's for some...
It's not a big deal to me either. If I had to break the tie vote, I would vote against it. I'm just gonna put it out there like that.
I think it might be, if you're getting off the board, you might make the motion to say board pay has to be zero. You know, and also the new board comes in and their hands are tied. I'm not sure if that's the logic behind the new board setting that, you know, having that vote to determine that, but...
And this is an idea, maybe our pay should be based on how fiscally responsible we are.
We've been pretty fiscally responsible for the last six years.
You have a scoring system you want to...
Yeah.
They got to develop one.
I'm not gonna need to do that. I mean, I think that, just a few, just a few things to consider. I mean, I think one is, obviously, this is a valued position. You know, I mean, it's like, it takes a lot of effort and work. And I think people, you know, like you said, it's a thankless job. I think people appreciate people who stick their neck out to sit on the board and put in their time. That said, I mean, I think the question is, how do we want to express that value? You know, should we do it monetarily or, you know, how else should we recognize? I mean, it's taxpayer money, you know? And, you know, I think the other question is, we want the highest quality board possible from the community, right? So I think the other question is, is money reimbursement any kind of incentive for someone to run for school board? And, you know, like Gary said, he didn't vote for the money. I mean, I don't know whether increasing it would sway someone to run or not, you know? And I think that's just a question that I have, you know, is, does it offer any, does it increase our applicant pool or, you know, give us a better chance of having a quality board? You know, and then two of the things that I think are important is, one, you know, regardless of how we vote, you know, if a board member doesn't want it, they can refuse it. And then secondly, I think that it is important for the board to consider if we're making, if we're having, if we're in a situation where you have to make significant cuts that are harmful to staff, that, you know, maybe our own reimbursement should be the first to go, you know, as small as it is. But I think it's symbolic if we're having a cutting of salaries. But I'd be happy to have a full discussion and wait till May. And I always like to see comparables, you know, as far as other school boards. I wasn't able to find them online.
And I've used this comparison before too. We ask a lot of our volunteer fire department, and I don't know what they get paid. I know it's not much, I don't think they get paid at all, our EMTs. You know, they're looking for volunteers all the time. And really, they do a whole lot more than what, as a per, per month, time spent per month, they are training once a week, classes, certification. You could use that analogy too.
Absolutely.
But I would say there's no bigger heart than the heart of a volunteer.
I guess we've had enough said on that one, let's move on pandemic.
You don't have a large heart either.
District pandemic.
You don't have a large heart either.
We have, we're currently working on one. The DPI had sent out a template. Nurse Julie Pompos has been working on it. We've got a committee formed that we will have a pandemic plan in place. We've got a draft of that plan. And we have taken steps, you know, you can, you can say it's been the coronavirus that's prompted this, but in all honesty, we've had more influenza locally than anything else. And then, like I said, when we had the three-day weekend, we really addressed both buildings, trying to disinfect all the hard surfaces. And again, that happened this last weekend. One of the things that you'll be acting on is the actual hire, but we've had this person working for us. And it's been, it's been a huge plus for us on the weekends to be able to get at issues like this and, you know, trying to make sure we're disinfecting commonplaces where students are around all day long and sharing those germs. Roger recently picked up some more hand sanitizer dispensers that are the wall mount so that we can put them up where needed. If staff members at the elementary with sinks need, send them a request for more soap and paper towels so that hand washing can take place in the classrooms. I mean, we're, we're doing everything we can. We've been sending out notices, you know, here's ways to address this, you know, talking to your kids at home about hand washing and, you know, coughing in your, the crook in your arm and all of those kinds of things. So things that we would do for a cold or the regular flu, you know, this has certainly captured the attention of the country a lot more, but we're trying to take every step possible. I'll talk and toss it over to Mr. Austin and Ms. Dahl. You know, if we're shut down for some reason, the virtual learning day, while not perfect replacement, might be a way to address some issues in terms of, you know, depending on how long we would be shut down. You know, if the state health department came in and said, two weeks, you can't run school, oh, I would be very honest with you and say, virtual learning for two straight weeks is not going to be the kind of learning that we would really need to have take place. We might be able to fill in a little bit, but it's not going to replace what would be lost here.
Currently, Mitch, but in the future, could it?
I think, I think potentially, as staff gets more comfortable and can start to plan and create lessons that are more conducive to virtual learning, I certainly think that that is a possibility.
But I would, I'd like to hear from Matt and your...
In the future, I would think, as we get more comfortable with this process, that yeah, we could find days where maybe we need in the long, we can disinfect things where we can do like what we did on Tuesday, this past Tuesday. And that went very well, by the way. Number-wise, we had like two students at the middle school that did not check in for attendance. And I think at the high school, it was four. So we had pretty much everybody...
Ended up being one, one at the middle school.
So, you know, we had majority of our kids check in, majority of the kids worked on stuff. Now, did everything get done? No. It's like any other day, you have kids that are gonna do everything they need to, and there's just gonna be the kids that, I didn't do it today. So there's that leeway that the state mandates that you have to have, you know, on Tuesday is when we assign it, it's gotta be due by Friday. So it can't be due on Tuesday because some kids don't have the internet access. They could check in, but they couldn't get everything done. So overall, I thought it was a pretty positive experience. Our teachers, our kids, from what I've heard, most of them enjoyed it. They began a little bit different, some of them, you know, they got up in the morning, they were checked in by 6:30 and they were done with everything by 9:30 because it's not meant to be minute for minute in that sense. Or there were some kids that probably didn't check in until 2:00 and they were done by probably 4:30. So it kind of gave them that little bit of leeway, which I think was pretty nice for the kids. Teachers had really big responses back to it, though. And it was, again, it was a quick email. If you didn't understand something, email quick and we'd get right back to you. So it was pretty nice that way, too. Overall, though, I thought it was a pretty positive experience. Obviously, moving forward, there's still a lot of work to be done as far as getting internet access for everybody, making sure everybody has devices. But that's something that we need to talk to, talk about moving forward. But overall, Tuesday, that was a pretty nice day. And then our seniors, on that day, we had informed you they were on a field trip. They went to Epic, Vortex and WKOW, and absolutely loved it. Actually, it was kind of him and she goes, the day after, she goes, can we go back to Epic? It's phenomenal, if you haven't been to Epic, it's phenomenal up there. And you can't see all of it, it's unreal. But it was a really cool day for our seniors that day to get that experience because, you know, you can go get a degree in just about anything, or work at Epic or Vortex or WKOW, there's a lot of different possibilities that way. So overall, a really good day, I thought.
I think we're gonna have, I'm sorry, I think as a middle school staff, we're gonna have to visit the possibility with board approval, of course, one-to-one with our middle school students. I'm still a little hesitant, especially with maybe our sixth graders. But I think if we ever do run into a situation where we do have to miss three days, four days, at least they will be able to take a device home with them. Our survey, a lot of them had devices at home, but not, not all of them. And if we ever did have a situation like Seattle, I believe schools have been shut down for, what, two weeks maybe? If we ever had a situation like that, I'd want to make sure that our students had a device at home.
I had three of them that participated, two of the three said they had more homework than usual. And the funny thing, I was sitting in the afternoon in my house and one came running up and she ran a half mile. I said, what are you doing this for, my Fayet? And then she ran back to her house.
Fayet had to do it in 20 minutes and back to her.
She was a little over.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just, maybe make that part of the technology plan then.
Right, yeah, we're gonna discuss it as a staff and...
All right.
That was, that was my question. Do you have enough devices to do one-on-one for kids who don't have the ability to access the classroom at home?
We are like one-to-one in our classrooms, like every student would have access to a Chromebook. So we can do it. It's just some of them are gonna have to be updated eventually or replaced, so...
So you're not recommending the whole middle school be one-to-one at home? Just ones that don't have devices at home?
No, I'm recommending one-to-one of all middle school.
But we would have enough currently to be able to distribute to everyone already. We just have to get a replacement cycle going.
The major cost in doing something like that, that would be the cases. We don't have cases for all those down there because they're all cuts. Or at the high school level, we provide the case for them, we provide... Or at the high school level, we provide the case for them. We provide, they're obviously encouraged to put another case on it to protect it, but.
Right. You count up how many are on the carts, there's enough for everybody one-to-one. They just don't take them home. They're not checked out to the student. They stay on the cart. So like my son had to check one out because we don't have a device at home.
And see, because if, if kids don't take them back and forth on a regular basis and all of a sudden, you know, it's Tuesday morning and we get a call that, all right, we're closing down school for the next four, four days to sanitize, whatever the reason might be. Those kids that don't have access to a device wouldn't be able to get back into the building to, um, get a place.
So you recommend, you, you may be recommending one-to-one for the year?
Yes.
I got you.
Yes. And I'm going to check with local schools around the area and see how many have one-to-one and what their policies are, what agreements they have with the students and parents.
Could you have another distribution site like the library or some other designated area, community building, fire department?
Yeah, that would be, that would be a possibility.
You know, say, you know, we're hanging one-to-one and your Chromebook is here.
Yeah.
Come to the fire department and pick it up, sign on.
I met last week with Mesa Carrero from Tahoe and, and one of the things that they're looking at is, what, what would happen if the school were shut down for a couple of weeks? And, and we know that there's, breakfast and lunch are probably the, the two meals that several students are guaranteed to get as long as school's in session. And, and they're looking at a response, you know, how they might be able to help if we were to ask for them to help provide some services. And I almost look at a, like that as a Meals on Wheels kind of a possibility. And, and if we send, you know, if school is shut down, that doesn't necessarily mean that the school has the infection. You know, so I almost look at, you know, okay, here, in this brown bag, it's your meal. And in this brown bag, it might be a Chromebook where we might be able to deliver Chromebooks to in, in an emergency, you know? Because we're thinking, if this were a bad weather situation and, and we know that, you know, they're, they're talking about six inches of snow tomorrow, we would have been saying today, if, if we have no school tomorrow, it's going to be a virtual learning day. You need to make sure you take a device home, check out a mobile hotspot from the library if you need, you know, we would try to be as proactive as we could. So kids would have that opportunity. They could potentially check out that Chromebook from the middle school and take it home with them. But, you know, if it's, all of a sudden, 3:45 rolls around and the health department comes in and says, uh, you guys had to shut down. We wouldn't let anybody back in at that time. But, you know, adults could probably get in the building and help provide that equipment if need be.
And just give you a worst case scenario.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Let me give you even worse case. Let's say, let's say there's no internet in Iowa County because of some blizzard or whatever. You know, I mean, it, it might be good to have a, uh, maybe a tech-free learning day as a backup, you know, like say, you know, we're anticipating, you know, the worst blizzard of the year tomorrow. If you can't use your device at all, you know, do this instead. You know, read this chapter in your textbook.
And I think the great thing with you guys giving us the ability to know that that day was two and a half weeks out, our teachers were talking ahead of time. There were paper things distributed, distributed the day before, or hey, this is what we're working on, or here's your study guide because this is what you're going to do. Instead of printing it off, here it is.
Right.
So that's that proactive thing. But the nice thing again with weather, hopefully we have some sort of idea that it's coming.
Right.
So we can kind of do those things. Yeah, it was, I mean, every classroom looked different. I mean, every single one. If I had, they were, give me 20 minutes of exercise and tell me what you did. That's really all you had to do. You didn't have to film yourself or anything. Just give me 20 minutes of exercise. And, uh, you know, that's on the honest system that way.
Does a low-tech day count for the DPI?
We, you can, you can decide.
You can decide, oh, weekend, you're, oh.
Yeah, what the school, the school day would consider.
Virtual learning day.
But then also a low-tech day, like you're saying, where you make assignments.
I assume that would be a more.
This might be something the elementary needs to consider because we're not one-to-one. Or are we going to be one-to-one? But for an extended time, I, I don't know how that would work.
Right, or see, I'm surprised.
And the other thing I disagree about is the, the pressure it puts on parents who are working and made them to have to take off. Now, for the older kids, it, it might work, but for younger kids, it's, that's going to be a real burden on some families.
Yeah.
Good thing you have a lot of minutes.
Yes.
And that blizzard better show up on like our, our first of our four allotted days.
So back to like pandemic, so do we have, do we have any policy on, under what conditions you would say, shut the school down? You know, in order to, let's say, let's say there is an influenza.
I think the draft included the 30% threshold again. Again, it was based on DPI guidance that came up from them.
Just a recommendation.
And so a recommendation.
Here's a number you could consider.
Okay.
Yeah, each school could set their own.
But that 30% is pretty, kind of what most districts kind of adopt.
So there's a guidance from the DPI as far as.
There is, there is, yeah.
Richard Center just recently had one and it wasn't, they weren't at 30%.
But they couldn't staff their teachers.
Their teachers were the ones that were sent.
Their teachers were the ones that were sent.
And subs, they couldn't get subs as well. And then Nurse Pompos just handed me this that just came today. As I'm sure you're well aware of, if someone is being tested, it has to be reported so, to the health department. So again, it, it probably is going to start to come from the health department more than us saying, we know so many kids are sick. You know, a lot of times we'll ask, you know, if somebody, you know, Larry's not, Larry Jr.'s not coming in today. What's going on? Sometimes we get, he's just not coming. Okay. Sometimes we go, well, you know, he's, he's running a fever, sick to his, you know, sometimes parents will certainly share some of the symptoms, you know? We think he's got strep, he's going in to see somebody, but.
Well, let me ask you this. So, I mean, I wouldn't want to put on the parent to say, my kid's being tested for coronavirus. But I know that if someone comes in and I'm testing them for coronavirus, the health department gets notified in real time. Iowa County Health Department.
Yep.
So does that in turn go to all the school nurses in the county? I mean, would Julie get notified that someone's being tested in the county? I would, without sharing patient information maybe?
Well, she said today it would be, it would come from Iowa County, but I think she was talking about confirmed.
Right.
I don't know if she, I don't think she gave us the information about if there were people being tested, any confirmed cases. And I think Joelle might've been the one even to ask about, what do we distribute? And we just said at that time, the county is going to tell us what we're going to do, open or closed or shut down or that. So I don't know if she finds out how many are being tested. I know she'll find out from them any confirmed cases.
Okay, I, I think that makes sense. I mean, if someone's being tested, they'll be kept home, you know?
Right, like you, you couldn't tell me that one of Angie's children is being tested. I don't know, I don't know if Iowa County would either. They might say.
A student.
A student in your district has been tested and is being home quarantined. And then obviously you put two and two together, the student that calls in 14 straight days, you might be able to say, okay, that, that's the student that was, had been tested. But I don't, I don't know that they would share, but I will certainly ask Julie that question as to how much information she would get. You know, would they say, you have an elementary student, you have a middle school student that has been tested?
Yeah, and I, and I think that, I, I don't think having someone tested is grounds to close the school.
Correct.
You know what I mean?
Right.
But I think that if we have a suspected case in the county, in working with the health department, we would want to identify anyone who was in close contact with that kid or staff member. And so I think that as that's being investigated, you know, people will be contacted like at the school to try to contain whatever circle of contact.
I would imagine, I would imagine they'll be asking us for a lot more information, you know? The student is a sixth grader, you know, who's his, who's his main teacher, you know, what classes? You know, and, and they'd probably be looking at, trying to get information from us as opposed to sharing with us that, hey, you know, what Mitch Weiner, it's been tested positive.
If they're confirmed, if you had a confirmed case and it was a student in the district, wouldn't it almost be your responsibility to tell superintendent who the student or staff member was? I mean, I realize there's privacy issues, but it's like, if Dr. Dunn knows that I happen to be the, the person and I'm carrying it, if he knew that it was me, it'd be a lot easier for him to get the information to him or the county, whoever, to say, okay, jumps in these three classes. So we better.
You know, I, I think, I don't exactly answer that question. I mean, my first thought is, you know, if you're sick, we would say, Jeff. Well, we would say, we need to notify people who you've been around, you know, is, is that okay?
So how long would it take for that to? If you were going to test me, for example, how long would it take before you know that, oh, yeah, you got it?
All I can tell you is they're now testing for it in Madison and Milwaukee and we don't just send it to Atlanta anymore.
Do you have to send the person to Madison or you send the test to Madison?
We send the test to Madison. We can obtain this lesson in the clinic here. So I would bet you, I would say under 48 hours, but I'd, I'd have to look up what the turnaround time is. I know that, but there's a rapid flu that's like two, you know, an hour or two turnaround. So it's a similar type of test. But it's a specific test that has to be run, has to be sent.
Because the symptoms are very similar.
Correct. So really the suspicion has to be raised based on reports of a case in the area that people might've been exposed to, you know, other than people from China or, you know, or traveling from a, a place in the US where it's been known to. Been spread, like have you been on that cruise ship?
Yeah.
You know, that kind of thing.
Right.
South Korea, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's one of those turnaround, is what they tell, what I've been reading from the CDC, the twin bar turnaround. And it's, you know, a genetic test. It's a reverse transcript, a species.
It should be pretty quick, once they get the specimen.
Should we somewhat stabilize and have you bring us, bring it back again next month?
I certainly can.
So you say the DPI is working on a pandemic plan?
They have a template and, and each school can put their own together kind of based off of that template.
You want to just email that out to us just as a FYI?
Sure.
And then if, you know, if, if you or Julie recommend any changes to that template that's specific to the district or if you're suggesting any changes?
Yep.
Or if you think we need to have a policy for committing to review it in the schools?
Yeah, I think, I think the state might treat this issue a little differently than some other illnesses, you know? Because there were kids in the school, both elementary and high schools that were hepatitis B carriers and were shedding the virus. And you weren't allowed to say anything about that, you know, and I reported it to the state. This illness I think will need to be different than how they handle at the state level. They'll probably instruct the practicing physician as to how much they can notify people and talk. But there were other illnesses that have been in the school that you weren't allowed to say anything because of HIPAA violations.
When you have a public out, health outbreak and the public health department needs to do investigations, that supersedes HIPAA rules.
Yeah, they'll be in charge.
So if it's for the greater good, you know, and people got to know who it is and who they are in contact with and all that.
So they'll get everybody there, we'll have them come back at the next meeting.
Let's hope we don't have to. I think that switch will think you know.
Okay, let's move on to show action items.
Credit card.
I move that we approve the credit card statement of activity and approve all those pages. I accept that.
Anybody have any questions for Mitch John either?
Sorry.
It's okay, it's called a question.
Dahl.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Steffus.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Bastin.
Okay, approval of the weekend custodian that we've already hired.
Yeah, we've had Tony really working, putting in his time.
How many hours a week, Mitch?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Ten on Saturday, ten on Sunday, and then the time has kind of moved a little bit. I, I would say as far as speaking to Roger, it's been nice to have, because we've been hosting some tournaments. And somebody's, geez, there's an awful lot of activity in here on the weekend. Yes, sir, there is, and that's why it's important we have somebody, uh, whether it's Sunday or whatnot. Plus he's been able to help us with some of that extra cleaning up here in this, in this building especially. So Tony has been working and just making that official through here. You've, you've approved this position in the hiring through Fund 80, so.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
How many weekends has he worked so far?
I would say this will be four.
We probably can't discuss any like job performance or anything outside of close session.
Correct.
But you're, you're recommending he remain hired?
Correct.
Okay.
And this is obviously through summer too?
Yeah. Okay, Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Steffus?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bastin?
Yes.
Can we have a motion to go into close session?
So who?
Second.
What's the nature of the close session?
Talk about staff, we're trying to.
Going into close session, Dahl? So.
Yes.
Thank you. Chambers?
Yes.
Dunn?
No worries.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Steffus?
Yes.
Bastin?